...for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Has the meeting been advertised according to the Olympic Women's Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. Backham.
Roanoke?
Mr. Backham here, Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Saye.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Ed Vito.
Here.
Mr. McEnroe.
Present.
Mrs. Akulia.
Here.
Dr. Krath.
Here.
And Mrs. Backham.
Here.
Coach Najjar, would you like to come up to the front with your team, please, and your coaches?
Congratulations, Coach, always good.
First of all, I would like to congratulate back-to-back state champions. Everybody in the world. I wouldn't be surprised if that's the first time that's ever happened. So, congratulations, and I know Mr. McEnroe would like to say a few words as well.
I just want to congratulate everybody, the young men, you know, it's a great way to end your high school career, back-to-back state champions. You know, I work at Jackson Memorial High School, and some of my students are on the football team there, and I see the coach every day, and when you guys came down to play Jackson, the principal asked me that day, what did I think about the outcome of the game? And I told him, I said, "It's two good teams, but I think it's going to come down to coaching, advantage Sabal." And as we see, you know, George Najjar and his coaching staff, you know, they walk and they talk, commitment and character, and commitment and character translates into state champions. And, you know, it's something so American about watching football at high school level on Friday nights, and it's something that I'm missing right now, and looking forward to three in a row. So, I want to congratulate, behalf of the Board of Education and the residents of Sabal, we're proud of you and want to congratulate you.
I'd like to reiterate, I coached football, believe it or not, for 10 years, all right? And I always find out that Coach Najjar and his coaches teach you guys more than football. And just like Mr. McEnroe said, teach you about life, teach you about what's right and wrong, and certainly how to help one another and how to become a team. And we're extremely proud of you guys, it's just an unbelievable feat, and, you know, like you said, we came in and I knew if we got close, that we would win. You guys played a great game, it was really enjoyable. And Coach, I'm going to, there's a little certificate, it's a repeat certificate, and hopefully you could put this on, and Mr. McEnroe, would you please read it?
This is the Coach Najjar and staff and the 2001 Bomber Football Team. From Sabal Board of Education, recognition of winning back-to-back Central Jersey Group Four State Football Championship, 2010 and 2011, given this 17th day of January 2012. Coach?
Very much.
Coach, would you say a few words for us?
First of all, on behalf of the coaching staff and the entire football program and the kids that have represented the program, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for having us here today, we're very privileged and humbled by this opportunity. We love playing football, we love competing, but we love representing this town, this district, this community, and this high school. And I work for a gentleman, Mr. Brown, who's a great leader for us, and he's a great supporter of athletics and all activities, and it's a great community to work in. And I speak on behalf of the entire staff, and I'd like the staff to come forward, please, with us here. We have Coach Novak, who's a teacher in the district, as you know, Coach Marotti, former player here, Coach Salem, a former player, now a teacher here, Coach Munch has been here since my inception, Coach Mish has been on board for a few years, Coach Mish has been on the staff for two years, and he has two championships to show for, that's pretty good. Coach Mahoney, of course, is a teacher in the district, and I think Coach Curry's around here somewhere, or he was here anyway, as you know, he's a vice principal and also an integral part of our staff as well. So, on behalf of the entire group that's here behind me, and these guys deserve all the credit, these guys have put in the hours, they put in the countless hours of the offseason in the weight room, and they dealt with us as coaches, imploring them to work as hard as they could and come together as a team. And things, a lot of people and a lot of teams didn't think that we had it in us, especially after losing early in the season, but these guys stuck with it, they believed in us, they trusted us, and they kept working hard, and the credit goes to them for finishing the job. So, on behalf of the entire coaching staff and the community, we want to thank these gentlemen for making it happen. Want to go over here?
Can all of the boys move over here by the flag so that...
Come on, guys.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Guys, get out of the back. Tight, you gotta get it tight. Guys, the suits in the front, guys, the suits in the front.
That's wet suits.
One, two, just one more, please. One, two.
Thank you, guys. Again, thank you, guys, awesome job, thank you very much for coming.
Okay, presentation ready?
All right, yeah. Ed, you want to come up, Marilyn?
Just come up. We're going to do a series of academic and achievement presentations, and the first part of our program that we're going to do, tough audience, first thing we're going to do is talk about student growth and some of the assessment models, and we're going to spend about 15 minutes, maybe once a month, talking about achievement and academics, and this is basically a board initiative, and at any time I would ask that people had questions, to please, you know, just let me know. And I think this is the fairest way of assessing children and assessing students' student growth model. If you go to the next slide, and I don't know if you can see that, but I did put copies, still are copies of the presentation on the table here. A growth model, basically what it will do is, it adds a new dimension to the understanding of student performance that allows parents, educators, and students to look beyond a point in time, status, especially on the New Jersey ASK, to understand the change in achievement from year to year. The way No Child Left Behind basically works is you can score on a scale score of 205 in the next year, you can score 195, and there is no actual growth model at all, and it just tracks you from year to year, but it does not determine how you did from year to year. So, by understanding the student's academic status and how it has grown, parents, teachers, and students have more information for reflection, discussion, and improvement of overall performance. So, what we decided to do today, if you go to the next slide, is that we have a short video that deals with something that is called Status Splitting, which is called Student Growth Percentile. The Student Growth Percentile is about a 13-minute video, and it's pretty complicated, so what we're going to do is we're going to split it into sections, and the first section is that we're going to deal with is what is growth? And that's what we're going to do today. What do we mean by growth? The second, which deals with...
No, leave that there.
Which deals with the actual student growth percentile on the individual, that's about six or seven minutes long. That explains how the state, how we are going to calculate a youngster from year to year on how they do compared to everybody else in their own group. So, in other words, you're going to be able to get a percentile from 1 to 99 that basically determines how well the child is done in comparison to what everybody else scored the year before, and then comparing apples to apples, and not comparing the youngster that, let's say, scored 190 compared to somebody that scored 300. They're comparing the same students, basically with the same scores. And finally, then, what they're going to do, which I think is a good idea, then they're going to start to aggregate the data through groups, so that subsequently you can see groups of students, you can see, obviously, for teachers, and then for schools, and for school districts, and it's the fairest way, in my opinion, that you could really analyze what's going on. Now, what I'm going to do is, what we're going to do right now is show a short clip on what growth is, and again, Sandy, this is only about 2 minutes and 45 seconds, it's on the first section that basically talks about student growth.
This video is part of the NJ Smart Educational Series for New Jersey educators and serves to complement the instructor-led course using student growth percentiles. During this video, you will learn a new way to understand a student's performance by using student growth percentiles. You will learn how student growth percentiles are calculated for individuals and groups, and how the concept of academic peers relates to growth percentiles. You'll also learn how to interpret student growth percentiles for both individuals and NJASK is a criterion-referenced assessment that tells us whether a student has demonstrated proficiency in a given subject's grade level content standards. The student's scaled score gives us information about his or her relative position to the bar, either above or below the cut score for proficiency on those standards. Student growth percentiles, or SGP's, enable us to understand student performance in a new way by comparing a student's achievement change from one year to the next with that of his academic peers throughout New Jersey. In essence, student growth percentiles tell us whether a student grew faster or slower than other students in the state who share his or her NJASK test score history. The addition of growth percentiles allows us to redefine student performance, opening up new avenues of investigation into what works for New Jersey's students. With student growth percentiles, performance equals achievement plus growth. A student growth percentile is calculated by comparing the student's achievements to that of his or her academic peers. Academic peers are students throughout the state of New Jersey with similar NJASK test score histories. The growth model does not take into account any demographic factors such as gender or ethnicity, or specific programs like those for English language learners or students with disabilities when identifying students as academic peers. Students are selected solely on their achievement of the NJASK tests. What the academic peers have in common is simply that they are in the same grade, they have taken the same NJASK tests, and they have achieved similar results for past tests.
Okay, that includes the first section. When they talk about student growth percentiles, they're saying, let's say, a youngster scores 206 on a test, they're only going to compare that youngster's growth based on all the other youngsters that score around 206, they're not going to compare that youngster who scored 300, because obviously they're in two different percentiles, two different growth models. And subsequently, what they're going to do is they're going to find out from year to year how that student does in comparison to everybody else that scored 206, and see how, if, let's say, they, that, let's say, there's 100 youngsters that scored 206 or around that score, then what the state is going to do on the New Jersey SMART, which is the huge database that we double our scores into on the New Jersey ASK, that subsequently, let's say, from third to fourth grade, they're going to track those kids. And if you fall between, let's say, the 35th percentile and the 65th percentile, you're kind of in the median range. Anybody who scores above the 65th percentile has done very well, and then obviously you're going to put all that together, and subsequently you'll create group scores. So, when we ask, when you go back to the simple question, what is growth, that's what we're starting to look at. There's a huge part on our strategic plan, and I don't want to get too deep into this, that talks about growth, that talks about performance. The new model that's coming out, and the acronym is PARC, that subsequently, under the old No Child Left Behind, it was not a growth model, it would analyze student scores from one year to the next, and it had no concept of whether it keep growing or not, so subsequently, a youngster could score 190, which is non-proficient, go up to 199, still be considered non-proficient, but the youngster would be considered failing. Under the new system that's coming in, and I believe it's wide, 213 and 14, it's going to be all online, the youngsters are going to be assessed multiple times during the year, and as a result, they're going to be based on a growth model. Now, there's approximately 25 to 30 states that are involved in the PARC model, there's also another model that maybe, there's another 20 states that are involved in, but both models are, they deal with the growth concept. I think this is very fair, because obviously you're comparing apples to apples, you're not comparing apples to oranges, and it gives a fairer synopsis and a fairer summary of how people have done. If you look towards the end as well, you can see here that as we go on, the remaining video, there are some questions that we will be discussing. How academic peers relate to SGP's? How an individual SGP is calculated and interpreted? And how SGP's are reported and interpreted for groups? The first two will be the next, the SGP will be the next one that we bring out, and every administrator and every teacher is going to be taught this down the road on what the SGP is. It's not that complicated, but it deals with percentiles and statistical analysis. If you go further on, then you'll see there are some additional questions that I'm going to my administrative team, and basically what I will ask in one or one or two of the most important things, you learned by watching the videos, once the videos are done, the full three sections, how will you apply this in your everyday work? And certainly, who else in the district needs to know this kind of information? And I just basically said that, these are the kind of things that we're looking at. Now, if you look at the schedule, which is the last, is, we plan on the next is February 7th, which is part two. That will be actually, how do you calculate, what are we talking about here? How do you calculate and get an SGP, a student growth percentile? You better, you know, parents, this is what your child is going to be rated based on, is how is their SGP from one year to the next? And that's calculated from 1 to 99. And then subsequently, the 21st is our, once again, in our academic and achievement series, is to let the children lead. That is one of our favorite and one of the really, one of the best board meetings that we have, is that the children get up and really help us run the meeting. And March 6th, we will talk about the new strategic plan that we're going to start rolling out, that's the first of two meetings, first of two meetings, and a large component of the new strategic plan is, there's a huge component on performance and assessment, as well as the objectives behavioral in nature, they can be assessed and they can be analyzed. So, I think it's a little bit easier to understand, but it will not be rolled out until then. At a PIC meeting, the strategic plan will be rolled out to the parents in about a month or so, so they get an opportunity to weigh in on it, the board will have an opportunity to weigh on it for about a month, and then the last of the three will be the SGP group video, which is part three. I'm going to let Ed talk a little bit about the last thing, which is in May, which is a district growth model, and that's part of the strategic plan, and I think just within a nutshell, we'll talk a little bit about what we're going to do in creating our own growth plans and what we've been doing so far. What do you think? One of the things that we've started to do with the help of Mr. Block, over there, thank you very much for working with the data, one of the things that we've already started to do is collect the data for our district and our students, and one of the things that we're factoring out, which is why it's taking a little longer, one of the things that we're factoring out is, we're trying to look at comparing students from year to year, from the time they took New Jersey ASK III, which would be the benchmark for that group of students and for that individual student, all the way through their high school career. One of the things that we're factoring out is that if a student didn't take the New Jersey ASK III, but was here for our New Jersey ASK IV, New Jersey ASK V, we remove them from that list, so that it's one more variable that we're eliminating from the analysis that we're doing. We're trying to look at whether or not we can identify any patterns, whether it be through a particular year, a particular school, a particular test, it becomes a little difficult comparing apples to apples, as Dr. Arfano was saying, because of the multiple times that the New Jersey ASK scores have changed, and the benchmarks have changed and so forth. So, it's taking a little while to factor some of those initiatives in, or those, the process of that, of eliminating some of those things, or balancing it out. We're trying to get as close as possible for a realistic statistical analysis of our students, our district, and how we're performing, and how we're improving performance. So, we're a little ahead of the curve with the state, hopefully by the time the state has finished their portion, we're doing New Jersey SMART, we'll be able to take the data that they've provided and the aggregated data that they've provided, and compare it to what we're already doing, hopefully we'll be on the mark. But that, we'll be presenting in May of this year. That's the first section of about five different meetings, three or four, that will be dealing specifically with academicus and achievement. The next major one will probably be February 7th. The strategic plan has a huge component as far as performance and testing within it, and subsequently, one standard just deals specifically with that, there's nine different elements right in the one objective. So, does anybody have any questions from the board or from the public? We'll be getting more up on this each month, or every month and a half or so, as we get it. We're trying to take, you know, trying to get a little bit more as far as academic and achievement, I thought this was a good video to start out with, because we're learning this as well as you are. This is the first that I'm hearing, Student Growth Percentile, I'm sure most of the teachers probably have not heard of this, they may have heard it peripherally, but this is what's coming down the pipe, ladies and gentlemen. And I think this is a much fairer way of assessing how we are doing as a school, or as a district, or even as a youngster, because you're comparing apples to apples. Yes?
I think it would be helpful for parents using the growth model to understand that they will be able to check and track their individual child's performance. Once you use a growth model, if you're a parent and have a child who's been partially proficient last year, and now this year, he or she is partially proficient again, and you think your child isn't making progress, now that they'll be compared to their own group, their own subgroup, you might have seen that last year, their progress within that group was only 10%. This year, they're still partially proficient, but they've made a growth percentage of 55%, which is, I think, helpful to parents in working with their children to achieve greater achievement.
And that's a good point, Ms. O'Leary. What we're going to try to do is, slowly and surely, we'll probably roll this out to the parents too in a PIC meeting, because the student growth percentile, the SGP, is not, it's not a difficult concept, but it's relatively foreign concept, and when your son or daughter, let's say, was still not proficient two years in a row, but all of a sudden you're seeing that your youngster, your son or daughter, scored 65 with a 70 percentile, means they did very well. I mean, to everybody that scored around them, they scored 65 or 70, they scored in the top percentile of their group. That doesn't necessarily mean they're advanced proficient or whatever, but I think as this goes on, guys, you'll learn a little bit more about the student percentile. I think I've watched this video five times, and every time I've watched it, I learn a little bit more about it. Eric really helps me out, Marilyn helps me out, there's a lot of stuff, they're both statistical, you know, compared to me, they're gurus, all right? But they're really getting into it, Marilyn and Ed just had their statistical courses and their dissertation. I kind of did the qualitative approach when I was doing my statistical analysis, so, and I did it quite a few years ago, so this is all, the state is getting more and more into this.
But Professor, what's considered a year's worth of progress?
A year's worth of progress?
What would you expect someone should have with their scores, say, if they're at 65 percentile in their grade?
When you see... That's a good question.
65 percentile, but how do you tell...
That's a good, but I think when you see the next part, I think it will explain it perfectly. And just to give you a quick synopsis or quick analysis, I raised my hand and I said, "How do you determine a person who scores 300?" Let's say there's 100 kids in a room that scored 300, how are you going to put that kid in a category? Because that's a difficult thing to do, everybody scored 300, there's no place else but to go up. The way the presenter explained it was, for the year that moves from, let's say, 100 kids scored 300, if 90 of them dropped, and you continued to score 300 or 299, you were in the top 10%, then your percentile would have been 90, 91, 92, 95. If you dropped more than 10, 15, 20, 25 points, let's say you went from 300 to 275, your percentile would drop from, you know, 100 down to wherever it is, where you fell, where the other kids fell. So, if you dropped it to the 25th percentile, you might have scored 275, you say to yourself, "How could that be?" But in the group that you were grouped in, categorized in, you dropped 75 points because 75 other kids were better than you. So, each year, they're going to, you're right, year to year to year. And, good question, the PARC model, I believe it's midterm, each half-year?
They haven't fully completed whether they're going to go two-year or two tests or more.
Right.
Somewhere between two and four.
Right. So, it could be that they're, I think personally, they're going to go twice a year, because I don't think they're going to be able to do four times a year, only because I just think it's going to be too cumbersome, but they'll try.
I think the other piece that is tying it back directly to Sabal, one of the things I looked at is, for example, our English scores, and I picked a certain grade level, and I plotted them over the last five years in terms of the number, the percentage of students who are either proficient or advanced proficient, basically passing. If you look at that percentage over the last five years, we started out around 94.5%, and last year we were down to about 74%. So, we dropped 20%. So, my immediate reaction was, we have a major problem, you know, there's something wrong here, that our English scores in that grade have dropped 20 percentage points over the last five-year period. But when you look at the surrounding schools, are the schools in our district factor group, those schools' performance follow our trend, including the spike that we had in the second year, all the way down to the 20-point drop that we had, basically right to the line. So, every other school is performing the same way that we are, and in some years, we were actually a little bit ahead. So, what that tells me is either all of the students in our district factor group are losing comprehension of the English language at a rate of about 20 points over five years, or they've actually made the test harder and raised the passing bar, or raised the level of knowledge that's being assessed on the test. So, unfortunately, with that data, I don't have an idea of how well our students are performing, other than to say they're on par with the rest of the schools in our district factor group. I don't know if they grew. From this model, I think I'll know if they grew, because if everyone has dropped, and I've maintained my level, I'll still be scoring higher than the same percentage of students that I scored higher than five years ago. If I improved, I'll be scoring higher than a larger percentage of those students, and if I need further remedial work, I'll be scoring lower, I'd be scoring lower than I did five years ago in terms of those students.
How would you use the new student engagement for your meeting?
Good question. We're going to start...
They are, they're putting the data, they're putting the data in for the NJASK scores right now, okay? So, we should have some kind of data within the year, we will back.
So, if that's any time, measure 14.
That's your basic.
Correct. But that'll be for the NJASK, in 2013, 14 school year, they're going to be changing the assessment, so we're going to start all over again. So, you know, we're not going to...
So, you're going to do the NJASK?
No. No, we're going to be, they're coming up with...
Do you need a log?
Excuse me?
Do you need a log and plotting in the NJASK?
The state is doing it for us.
They're waiting.
The state is doing it for us, part of what they're doing now, they're also going to be, which I believe is going to be available next year, they're going to tie student scores to individual teachers in both math and language arts. It's all where they're going with the whole new teacher evaluation idea with linked student performance.
So it's more for teacher evaluation than individual student progress?
No, 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 it's a combination. Okay. Initially, they're all, the first round, they're going to have the student growth scores in there. Then eventually, which they tell us, next year, they will have it linked to teachers. That's where it stands out, but initially it's student growth.
Dr. Alphano, say, like, what if they're in fourth grade, it's a hard transition in fourth grade? You need certain kind of years, a kind of a state where you're still in fourth grade every year or so?
Well, what happens is, let's say the student is in third grade and they scored 200. Their growth percentile, they're going to be measured against, like Dr. Alphano said, all other students who scored 200. So let's say if in fourth grade, they go down to 195. Their percentile for that will be, well, it's a tough transition here, and if it's a tougher test, that will equal out.
Or everybody should share the same.
Or close to the same, right. And all the students that were in that band.
Look, everybody could have dropped. The least amount, let's say there's 100 kids that scored 200 and then everybody dropped. And the highest score was 195 instead of 200, that person's going to score on that 100 percentile because they, that person did better, that youngster did better than anybody else. So they're going to be waiting so that you'll be able to understand, even if they go to another test, they're going to have to give us some sort of a waiting system and they're going to have to create a benchmark. And then we're just going to have to wait. See, that's why the kind of guys are jumping ahead and it's a good thing. So that's why I said to Kevin and the board, we need to take this in steps because I'm just learning it like you are. The goal that we have in CEREBL, so that you know, this is not a gotcha, this is not, I'm not looking to find, I'm looking to see how we're doing so that I know down the road what we need to work on, whether it's seventh grade English, whether it's fifth grade math, you know? And at the same time, you need to understand, we're also doing this for our children right now. We're actually focusing in on New Jersey AS and doing a longitudinal study just based on our scores and doing some analysis now. And we're also down the road with strategic plan, and again, I don't want to get too far ahead, is that we're going to create what are called DAT scores or DAT tests, which are district achievement tests, so that we can then determine whether or not, how children are doing and whether or not curriculum is being covered. This is not about, hey, we want to use this to go after people. That's not the goal of this. The goal is to try to help us so that we can find out what subgroup is a concern or what grade level is a concern, or if it happens to be, what school is a concern and what do we need to do to try to assist that. Kevin was pretty upset when he saw that our scores were declining and I said, we need to do more research on that to determine why that is. And then when we actually looked at him, he actually looked at him, he found out that we're actually doing better than most of the people in our district factor group. That's because they made the test more difficult probably and they raised the bar. So, you know, we can talk about this, but let's wait till the next section. I think you're going to get a better idea when we come back in three weeks and then I think it's going to give you a better understanding of what the student growth percentile is.
Do you think there's something here that we will have data that we can do?
I'm hoping, yes, yes. If you see, our goal is yes. And you'll see from our strategic plan, it's very specific about what we're going to try to do and when we're going to do it. And if we don't, we're going to record out and report out that, okay, maybe something was a factor of why it didn't happen. And/or it worked, and now we have our baseline. You're right, we have to start creating baselines, and we're doing that internally. You know, Ed is taking a lot of New Jersey AS scores and he's cataloging thousands of kids and he's taking them from third grade all the way up to eighth grade. And hopefully we can get a very good analysis of where these children are and where the issues are and what it is. And we'll just see. And again, this whole part model, this whole new assessment, is going to be a learning experience for everybody. And I think it's fair because it's based on a growth model. It's based on what a child did from year to year. It's not based on, you know, and it also analyzes their own type, how they scored and they take it root where they scored. So I think this is a good start and then hopefully we can continue this.
Helen's got a question.
With special ed, will that be connected to their IEP, so therefore should they, do you have anything on that?
We really haven't talked about that, but I think part of the strategic plan, we talked a little bit about that.
And in the IEP, in the goals and objectives, you know, you could certainly put a percentage in there, but it doesn't mean that that is casting.
But not even a percentage, you want to put a percentile in.
A percentile of improvement.
A percentile of growth.
And Helen, that's so individualized, whether you commit something like that as part of an IEP, it's a decision we have to really look at and discuss with the parents. I don't see that as much as a skill going in there rather than percentage of growth.
And that's not us, but we have to answer, are we in AYP? But then what are those not discussed?
We don't know yet what AYP is going to look like in the future. We don't know if it's going to be, I mean, right now it's that a certain percentage of students pass. They don't care whether or not they're special ed or ELL and so on, just a certain percentage have to pass. We don't, we don't know yet what they're going to do with this and how, what it will ultimately look like on a federal level, because that's really what it is. AYP is federal. We don't know what that's going to look like. We'll have to see.
When you see the student growth, again, you guys are getting ahead, but when you see the SGP, it says, if you're scoring between 35th and 65th percentile, you're falling into the category that you're expecting. So that might be their proficiency level. They haven't said that, but that's what it looks like. So if you're between the 35th and the 65th percentile, obviously if you're above that, you're doing great. For a special education youngster who's scored 150, 160 or whatever, they're going to be scored based on how well they do with their own group. So I think that's fair and whether or not you want to put that into the PLEF or whatever, whether or not, that's an individual kind of thing. But I think what they're going to do is they're going to analyze our score from a school perspective based on if we fall between those two parameters. So why don't we wait until February 7th? I think you're going to get a better understanding of where we're at because it explains all these things a lot better than I could.
As the video said, they're going to not look at race, gender, et cetera. That's going to be factored out, they're really just going to look at what you scored.
Right. They're going to look score to score and how, where you scored, and it doesn't matter what your disability is or whatever, they're going to see how you wind up on the student growth percentile. Thank you very much.
We'll still be able to disaggregate that data if we wanted to, correct? If we wanted to see how...
Kevin, we haven't gotten any of it, so I don't know. I'm assuming you will be, but remember, New Jersey SMART can only manipulate the numbers as far as they let you do it. And then you have to download it from your own...
Yeah. I think it's...
Correct.
It's sort of...
I know it must be so...
Yeah.
Put those lights on, please.
It's dark.
Second, I can't.
Any corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Bafta?
Yes.
Mr. Vasali?
Yes.
Sire?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Magnum?
Yes.
Mr. Puglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Fatt.
Yes. Student council report?
Currently, we're in the process of organizing two events for the following month, one of them being the annual flower sale. The flower sale, students will get the chance to purchase a flower and send a personal note to the person of their choice. The next event is the King of Hearts. King of Hearts is basically a competition/fundraiser where students will get the chance to buy necklaces to gift whoever they want, and at the end of the month, whoever has the most necklaces gets to be crowned the King of Hearts and they also get the red flags. Oh, and I'll also like to note that my last name is spelled wrong up there.
Sorry.
I have a question. How's our senior trip looking? How many students are we going, have going on our senior trip that you have?
There's been a pretty big buzz about it in the hallways. I'm pretty sure that there are a lot of students that are going to...
Is there a date that you have to sign up before?
Uh, yeah, I think that's already, I think that already passed. It's been established.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? District highlights, Mr. Magnum?
My pleasure. Olive Elementary School commemorated the 70th anniversary of Pearl Harbor in December. Retired Chief Petty Officer Richard Kozmowski along with the Save the American Legion Post 211 presented a PowerPoint program that included facts about the dictatorship used by our military and the meaning of the badges worn by the military. There were maps that explained how the Japanese were able to surprise the United States so easily on December 7th, 1941. The actual radio broadcast by President Roosevelt was also played. At the end of the program, each member of the American Legion student pointed to the students and said, "I fought for you." This was a reminder to us of the sacrifice that is given by our armed forces each day. The holidays were made a little brighter this past December thanks to the students and staff at Olive School. The children and teachers of Olive School decorated holiday treats with scarves, hats, gloves, and toys. These items were donated to needy people. Olive teachers Jeannie Casio and Cara Duffy delivered over 10 bags of gifts to women aware of Middlesex County, a woman shelter, to Bristol Myers Squibb Children's Hospital or Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, and to local outreach centers. It truly is better to give than to receive. The students and faculty of the Samson Elementary School ate through boxes specially marked Cheerios throughout the month of November in an effort to collect cheer posters for families of those fighting overseas. For each postcard received, the USO contributed $1 to help support programs and military families. We were able to collect 14 specially marked boxes to send to the USO and approximately 30 regular boxes, which students of the SUES wrote messages to Captain Scott Armstrong, son of Lynette Armstrong, a paraprofessional at the Samson Upper Elementary School. Additionally, the faculty of the SUES raised money to purchase stamps to mail the postcards to the USO. Any remaining money was donated to the Wounded Warriors Project, and we are pleased to announce that we were able to send a money order in the amount of $116.74 on behalf of the SUES. Thank you to all who participated and more importantly, thank you veterans. Mr. Peter Alvarez of the High School Robotics Class recently held the first annual robotic sumo wrestling tournament. Each of Mr. Alvarez's three classes were divided into three-person teams and had to design, create, and build a robot to their own specifications for the tournament. Each class held its own best of seven tournaments with two teams from each class of ants. Two other at-large teams were added to create a championship tournament of eight teams. The robots battled until there were two teams remaining for the school championship. The finals were held with a series of strobe lights flashing and motivational music playing. The championship team, Team Yakuza, meaning sumo grand champion, consisted of Beatrice Trinidad, Rabbi German, and Alyssa Novak, who worked together with great chemistry and intensity to create a robot that proved to be the perfect combination of size, strength, and weight necessary to win. Much of the work was done after school on the students' own time. Congratulations to Mr. Alvarez, Team Yakuza, and all the students who participated in this highly educational event. And that, this is secretary, excuse me, board president, is the end of the district highlights.
There we go. Superintendent's report?
Before I start my report, I would like to comment on the first bullet. I was at that function at Olive, and the section where it says, "I fought for you," it's very true about that one, that's on the internet, and if you can go on it and look at it, I don't know if you've seen it. Basically, the video comes on where an elderly grandfather, probably around my father's age, who fought either in World War II or the Korean War, is picking up their two grandchildren at school. And of course, one of the two grandchildren, they're sitting there and they're looking at their phone and they're not really paying attention. And, you know, it's, and you can see there's a lot of respect for the grandfather. So the grandfather says, "Hold on a second, I want to show you something." So the grandfather drives them over to this old movie theater, and in the movie theater is maybe 25 people. And in the movie theater, they're showing clips of Pearl Harbor, talking about Franklin Delano Roosevelt, and the youngsters are still sort of playing with their phones and they have their iPods on, and they're listening to their grandfather. And finally, they start looking up and watching what's going on at World War II and how in Normandy and some of these places, and they were showing some real graphic stuff. And they stop for a minute and all of a sudden it gets very quiet and the grandfather gets up and he looks to the back of the room and here come four younger veterans or soldiers that are fighting in Afghanistan or fighting in Iraq. And he turns to them, the grandfather, and says, "I fought for you." And they turn to him and says, "I fought for you." And there wasn't a dry eye in the house. Basically, it's true, and I can see my father, who fought in the Korean War and was wounded, and, you know, my relative, who was brought home from Vietnam, not, you know, it's something that you have to watch, and if you get a chance, you really should, if you can go on YouTube, see that video, which is called "I Fought For You." And it's very touching, and it's really nice because I can see my father, my nephew, and how they have so much to offer, you know, about how their lives went so many years ago and that we sort of take that for granted. And, you know, they don't really talk about it. That generation doesn't really talk about it. So I just thought we'd stop and thank the veterans, and it was really, Pearl Harbor was really well done in all the schools, and I'm very thankful for everything that I have as a result of what they've done for me. Moving on to my report, buildings and grounds, the auditorium's going to be used for the band and chorus during summer months. Any questions with section one? With none, moving to B1 through...
Dr. Alphano, excuse me, on this here, to start us, are these our own high school students that are doing this?
Yes, this is James Craft. This is James Craft's students, and he labels them as starters, but they're mostly our kids.
Thank you for the clarification.
Once we're through with our resolutions in section 10...
Dr. Alphano?
Yes, so we're withdrawing here. I'll get them, you'll do them. Thank you very much. 13 is a resolution on an energy audit that we're going to approve tonight. Number 14 is withdrawn. 15 is an e-rating program, we're approving the resolution. Explaining, it's explained in that resolution. 16, we are withdrawing 16, the e-rating consulting firm. 17 is the board secretary is going to advertise for bid for the middle school unit ventilators, upgrades, patio replacement, and the high school athletic field entrance renovation. 18 is pulled as well, that's withdrawn for the printing services. 19 is a disposal of equipment as listed on page 7. 20 is the audit report and its recommendations. 21 is the corrective action plan. And 22 is the establishment of a reading specialist position, which is being paid out of Ochadawat behind Fong's in Title 1. And the ratification of the action on December 21st, the reiterate what we did on the 21st is the varsity baseball field as listed and noted. Any questions with this?
Dr. Alphano?
Yes.
Questions on a, well, actually three questions. We had exchanged emails. There's a reconciling item of $500 between Wayne's report and your board secretary's report.
Yes, I'm working through with the auditors. They made an adjustment that I posted on the 31st, so I have to figure out how that mechanism has to reverse itself.
So just a month versus month adjustment?
Yes.
Got it. And the other question was on the S-1701 transfer report?
Yes, the bottom line, the transfers for the capital, we have until the end of the year rectified that difference, is my understanding, since we transferred it out. And through the year, we've been transferring money back for the projects that we've approved.
Where have we been transferring it back from?
Most likely at this point it will be coming from the al肆的的 line, where we have excess money. we have excess money. That was a question the Board, Board Member asked several months ago also.
Right, but I think we've transferred too much money in to those accounts, correct? Too much expenses in?
We transferred out money, the out, because I had $225,000 budgeted there for the lease purchase. When I went to pay it, it was in the wrong line item, so I had to transfer the money out to the appropriate line item for leases.
By looking column five, it says year-to-date transfers to, and then from is in parentheses. So two would, to me, indicate that we transferred almost $740,000 in.
Hundred and sixty-seven in, five eighty-seven in.
Right, so we transferred.
Keep in mind, $700,000 was the new money that the Board authorized when we got the additional funding. We didn't use it for state surplus, and that's what I meant by working through with the auditors.
Okay, so because of that one-time funding source, excuse the S-1701 requirement.
Requirements.
Got it, okay. That piece makes sense. The third question I had was with regard to the field renovations, the field entrance way. Do we have a projected annus to how much that's going to cost?
Again, the toughest part was, I think the total was $115,000 plus the wage for the type of fence, which we estimated to be around $10,000, with around $125,000.
Is it field entrance, not the?
Oh, I apologize.
No, not the baseball fence. No, we're done with the baseball fence.
Field entrance.
Done with the baseball.
Is it thirty?
Forty thousand. I'm going to say no more than forty thousand is the back of the number.
It was in the neighborhood of thirty-six thousand. And we're paving, and that's our budget.
Excuse me?
And we're paving, and it's our budget.
We're going to pave, yes, and put a walkway along the fence up to the concession stand. And we'll have the final plans.
Given the fact that our upcoming budget is $2 million over cap, would it be wise, since this is unbudgeted, to hold off on this?
I also, I didn't vote, we voted on this already a while back for all three of these. I.
I mean, the first two, I have no issue with, but the last one.
But that's how I voted the last time, too. So it's up to what the Board wishes to do tonight. I, all three of these are already out to bid.
What I recommend is, they're all out to bid. They've been advertised. The bid opening is coming.
Well, then why are we prepared to go out now?
Because I didn't have them at the 23rd, the 20, the last meeting we had. The architect sent them to me after the fact. I'm putting them in for approval, because they went out either way.
All right, well then.
But the Board approved it. The Board gave me direction to.
Right, right, okay.
What I recommend is that at the award of the contract, if it's the desire of the Board not to move forward, you then reject at that time.
I'll be okay with that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Section C, personnel, non-certified. We have a resignation. Medical leave, some employment, professional days, substitutes, and two additions, six and seven, I will read on personnel non-certified. The Board of Education, number six, has requested to terminate the employment of Richard Carlton, heavily assigned custodian, Tuesday through Friday, Friday from 3:00 to 11:00 PM, and Saturday, 7:00 to 3:00, for the district effective February 18th, 2012.
February?
January.
Gen.
This is number seven.
Wait, so it's effective January?
It's January, I think, tomorrow. The Board of Education has requested to retroactively suspend custodian Thomas Seeger with pay effective January 11, 2012, pending further investigation. Any questions with that section, C?
One second. I'll be voting no on number three, paging.
On both appointments?
Just for clarification, shall we, Mrs. Jenkins is recommending both of us?
Yes.
I'm going to add also upon number three, say no to the first one listed, but yes
I'm also now on number three.
I'm sorry, Dan.
Number three, I'm also voting no, both on both.
Okay, moving to Section D, personnel certified. Two valuable people were losing to retirement. Count Fern and I went with count for ten years, excellent librarian. I wish her nothing but the best. And retirement of Ilan Konowski, another excellent employee. I wish them both very well. Number three, which is on page 10, is an unpaid medical, pregnancy leave. There's three pregnancy leaves there. We send a coaching appointment, and there's a few coaching aids unpaid on number eight. Small if you're a librarian who are down for one DAP program, $250. Number 10 is some co-curricular assignments, which are listed, some salaries for, and the employment of hires, which is number 11, as listed. 12, on page 12, are the professional days that run from 12, 13, 14, and then 15, and number 13 are a list of new substitutes. And we did add on number 14, from your list, from the first time, an unpaid personal leave, because we got to get that in. It's already, it's a little bit late, and we just got it, so I figured we'd put it in there. Any questions with Section B?
I have a question.
Sure.
On page 11, we have the reading specialist, which is being funded through the No Child Left Behind, but why are they on the tenure track? If we're not.
It's, 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 basically, it's not replacing anybody. So that's would be the requirement. If we decide we want to keep that, that person would stay on the tenure track. There's no, she's not replacing anyone.
Was this position included in next year's budget, do you know?
I, no, it's not.
No, it's not.
It's a year-to-year, depending on if you get the line as of right hand. There is no policy report. Moving to F. Number one is our head reports. Number two, curriculum, curriculum that's being approved. Three is the services that we provide for the students listed. Any questions with that section?
Dr. Fano, on the curriculum piece with the peer leadership, did we ever determine if we want to include anything in there about the fact that the students actually go out and teach and interact with the freshmen? Because I didn't see that specifically spelled out.
Give you the short answer.
Okay.
No, we didn't.
All right.
I mean, it's a, like I explained to you before, it's, you know, it's sort of, I mean, this is the first time we've really had a very comprehensive curriculum.
It's definitely a step up, yes.
It's a step up. And we'll take a look at it if we need to revise, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay.
Any other questions with that section? With none, moving to G, co-curricular. Most of these are regular awardees. Number three is a workshop that J.K. is going to. Moving right down, the annual family reading night at the Samsoil Upper Elementary School is number seven. Platinum sound, step squads, competition is listed. Any questions with that section?
I have a question. The, if you look at one and two, one says one athlete and three guests, but number two doesn't specify. Is there a distinction on how we determine how many guests people could bring up?
I think the way it's listed there is what is going. Because they don't, they don't, right now, they're just saying student, coach, and administrator. That's it.
Okay, so, but it says, so there's no additional guests?
I don't, I don't think so. The way it's listed there is the way it is. And they've really cut down on that. We used to be able to bring a lot more people, but you're just not allowing it. Any questions with that section?
Just a, I don't know if the intent of Mrs. Backo's question, but if any Board Member wanted to attend number two, I know that one is open, you know, at the Board Member's expense. I cannot attend, I'll be away that weekend, but if anyone wanted to go to that, it is available. Number one, I don't know about.
Is that the case for any? Can the Board Member go anytime as long as they pay? Okay.
It really depends on the external, yeah, it really depends on the external event of, because some of them limit the number of people from addition.
Right.
And we would always defer to the parents and the coach.
Okay, so maybe number one, they have guests if they pay, is that?
I think that's the way it works. The resolution is the same from year to year. Whatever, our illustrious business administrator is, oh, anybody that doesn't belong, go. That was as simple as that, unless they have a parent.
But it must be stated that.
Support, support services, there's a waiver for transportation. There's 10 trips listed there. One would change. You go to page 21. Again, platinum sound squad, the competition dates, there's a few more. The academic competition team trips are as well from the high school, and the percussion ensemble schedule is there as well. Number eight is the historical society trips that our fourth grade at the UES make, and those are the dates. That concludes my report.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. DeAndrea, on page 11, number 11, I'll be voting no on the acting principal position for Liz Delash for $500 a day.
Hiring people and people that are paid by public funds should be even residents of New Jersey. And rumor has it, the one of them does not even live in New Jersey. And I think you should research this before you start hiring people that are not even living in New Jersey. I believe the governor's statement was effective September 1st, that you had to be resident employees.
Mrs. Backo, if I could, the law states they have within one year of being appointed to move into the, into the state, and my understanding is this person has residency in New Jersey, is what I've been told by.
So she has residency in New Jersey?
That's what I've been told by.
She has permanent residency, or she's living in?
I didn't ask the question. She said she had residency. She came in and filed paperwork. It's not my requirement to file, follow and see if it's permanent or not. I just do know, I did meet her, and she says she has residency, and she changed the paperwork.
What makes me feel bad is that we have women that worked longer than her, and they actually quit because they were hard, and they were several residents.
There's nothing personal against her.
Again, those individuals.
I know, which is not right, though.
Well, Mr. Fano, I think I wrote this up once before about your personnel policies. And again, this sends up a flag, a negative flag. I don't care if it's department head, likes, individuals, people, whatever. Several residents should be considered first. Were these jobs even advertised? Is it word of mouth? Do they know the jobs are available? The job market is so bad nowadays, people looking for work, I mean, it's really not fair. It's not fair to the residents of Saraval, and it's not, I mean, people that really need jobs, they should be given the first opportunity of a resident at least. So you're violating your own policy, Mr. Fano.
I just have to clarify the policy issue. The policy that we adopted was of those candidates most qualified, we will give preference to Saraval residents. Now, I, look. Now, if, if.
What is the certification qualifications here? Are we talking about? Is this a department head?
You're making an accusation that we're violating our own policy. All I said was what the policy says. So if Mrs. Jenkins is certifying that these individuals, in her opinion, are the most qualified, and they don't live in Saraval, there's no requirement that we hire Saraval by our policy. You can certainly argue we might want to change our policy, but we're not in violation of our current policy.
Well, every patron is a patron, and I mean, it's wrong. It's definitely wrong. And how you are voting and all. I came from a very horrible meeting last Monday with our council, and trust me, I did not know that people are watching these meetings now. And I was so amazed to find out how many people watched that council meeting. And those council members are on a hot seat, and I really mean a hot seat. And people are annoyed.
That was just crazy.
So if this keeps going on, I don't want you to fall into the same category, and people are watching what you do.
Mrs. Phil Cummins, may I touch on what you were saying? I'm well aware of the residents in town, and I would, and I would like to, and I would like to hire those residents within town, absolutely. But when, but when Mrs. Jenkins showed us, I guess I'll say, approved to us the reasons why, and this was a month or two ago, the reasons why she took, she took each employee and she, she jotted down when they, when they were called, how many people said yes, how many people said no, how many people were always available, who wasn't, who was. And these two on top, I believe, Mrs. Jenkins, you can confirm that, that these two on top were always, always available, always, never gave a hard time, was always there, always did whatever job was asked of them.
Well, is that, I mean, there is a list. When I look at the substitute list, it's amazing how many substitutes are here and whatnot.
Right, but I don't, the list that I looked at, those others were, did not shine like these two did. And I wouldn't have liked them to. You know, I would have, I would have liked to stay with in Saraval, but to me, it was .
You're not saying it's only going out of state that really sends a message to the residents, and I believe you're up for election, you are, there's like three of you. Just consider that of how you vote. Because now people are paying attention, believe it or not. After last Monday, I cannot believe how they're paying attention.
My next.
Wait, excuse me, before you do, I'd like to answer a question. How was this advertised for these jobs, for people to apply? Was it advertised in the local paper? How was it advertised?
I believe these.
It's advertised internally.
Right, internally, but these positions have been open so long now, the, this was several months ago that they've been open.
What do you mean they're advertised internally? How is that advertised internally? Who would see?
Again, remember, this is the long discussion we've had with the Board, as the yes, no, maybe, and all the individuals. So basically, they were open positions, and our substitute for four people for this position is usually just internal from the people.
Internal how? How do we advertise internally?
I don't believe there, I don't believe there was ever a formal advertisement, what they showed.
So we didn't advertise for the positions at all?
No, I don't believe there was ever a formal one, no.
But everybody was aware? Wasn't everybody aware?
Yes, yes.
So was everyone in town aware? Like, everyone was aware, everyone?
Again, as Ms. Trapp has explained, the Board put forward a process, we followed through with the process. When we were bringing in the pool of individuals, we came down to three or four individuals that were being recalled on a regular basis. Thus, that discussion came forth from me as to, is it proper that we continually call these individuals in who are working on a regular basis for positions that were open to fill them? We thought it was only prudent that we fill it with those individuals that have been doing that work, and thus, no formal advertisements. We just gave the position to those people who have continually done the job. That's the process we've used, my understanding, for several years here when it comes to these positions. Those people that have performed the duties, the next opening, we more or less give it to them. If that's a procedure you wish to change and make every open part-time position an advertised position, we'll have to follow through with that, and we'll proceed in that manner. Because it's basic, I mean, the teachers have done differently because their contract required that open positions be bid and post. We've never done it with the part-time cafeterias. If that's what the Board's pleasure is from this point forward, we'll, we'll post and bid part-time positions if that's the pleasure.
Well, there's a difference between post and bid and advertising. I mean, I don't think you'll find too many internal people posting.
It's the same, it's truly the same thing. And post and bid and advertising, thus, is the same thing, if you open it up.
So just for clarification, was everyone in our cafeteria staff aware that we were hiring two people and there was an opportunity to apply?
I'm going to say yes, knowing that this has been going on for four months and knowing the rumor mill that was out there, I'm going to say yes, everybody would have known based on everything that's been going on for four months with cafeteria work, and knowing there were positions open.
Yeah, but you've had women that quit that are from Saraval because they felt that they would never be hired.
Again, that I didn't, I didn't promote that. Why those two individuals chose not to, with my understanding, is they just were tired of what was going on, and they just. Why those two individuals chose not to, with my understanding is they just were tired of what was going on and they just didn't want to be a part.
They also knew they had a staffed out resident that was telling everyone that they were next to be hired.
Again, if that was out there, that was not from me.
That is definitely out there.
And that person chose to step down. I'm relying on the recommendation of Ms. Jenkins that these are the two best qualified people that she has on her substitute list at this point in time for the position.
Mrs. Jenkins, could you explain the process? What your thought process was while you recommended these to the board? If you would come up to the microphone, please.
At the beginning of the process of hiring people, there were six open positions in my department. After meeting with the finance committee, three people were allowed, I was allowed to hire three people. There has been multiple discussion back and forth with all of us since September. Since then, we were able to hire three people. What's been, what Lori is referring to, Mrs. Ziro is referring to is when we originally recommended six people, only three were going to be, wanted to be hired. Those people, when they weren't hired, decided to quit. I called those girls individually, I spoke with them. I said, we don't know if that's going to happen as of right now. They opted to leave the substitute list totally. I called everybody on the list that I had. Mrs. Kilcombs, if you, you see a substitute list, but when you, when you go through that list.
It's lengthy.
It's lengthy, but not, but not all of those people are cafeteria workers. There, some of them are aides, some of them are professionals, some of them are bus aides. So they're not all cafeteria workers. I went through that list, there were, I believe, fifty-three people on that list. Out of the fifty-three people, twelve of them were willing to work. Out of those twelve people, I had eight. Out of those eight people, a few of them would work when they wanted to work, some of them didn't want to work. It narrowed down to about four. Those four people were consistently working for me on an ongoing basis. There were maybe two or three that would work a little bit consistent when they wanted to. And I was trying to get them to work over a weekly basis so that I can kind of get an idea of if they could fit in, do their job, work cohesively within the group, and all of that, those kinds of things. I look at their work performance, their work ethic, their reliability, their responsibility, and how they can handle themselves in the positions of all my cafeterias. Ultimately, after all of this process, those two people that I recommend to you tonight, which was based on the December twenty-first meeting, all of you were, a good amount of you were in agreement that we would hire the people that have been working in those positions consistently. That's why I was recommending them. Nobody else wanted to work, nobody else wants to work, people were, people know that there's open positions. As Mr. DeAndrea said, we don't advertise, we've never, since I've been working here for eighteen years, we don't, we have never advertised. We usually promote from within my substitute list to hire those open positions. I've had six open positions for probably four years now that we haven't filled. And this is the first time I'm starting to fill these positions.
This is why it's so competitive right now because you haven't hired. So now that's why everybody got so intense.
Well, it got intense, but there's also not a lot of people that want to work.
Right, right.
I mean, a lot of people are saying that there's people that want to, there's people that want to just be substitutes and there are people that want to work as cafeteria workers on an ongoing basis. So based on the recommendations that I gave you tonight, those two women want to work.
Now, can I ask a question? When you get the recommendations like that, you have cook managers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and sometimes you hear, like, utilize their opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that affected some of it also. I really, not in a way to help you, I'm saying, because I think you had people on there too that you were possibly interested in that, you know, didn't always work out in the kitchen where they were supposed to.
I'm not getting started.
I think you might want to be careful about evaluating personnel on public.
Well, I'm saying as far as where you're getting your recommendations from, the people that you would put forward to us.
Okay.
Can I ask a question then? So if a person, say, in town is interested in knowing there's an opening in the cafeteria, or how do I get a job in the school cafeteria? So in other words, I would have to tell them to be a substitute, come to you, ask you to get on a substitute list, be on the substitute list, and be available all the time or whatever, but to be called. So in other words, to get a job in the school system, in the cafeterias, they would have to be a substitute first. And you would have to evaluate them as a substitute.
Correct.
And their availability. And that's the way it works.
That's how I, that's how I.
Okay, so apparently no one in Saro is available or conscientious enough that we have to go out of state. I mean, do you know how this looks to the public?
Mrs. Kilcombs, President, if I may.
Go ahead.
For everybody that's sitting here, especially the loads that will watch this on TV, I like facts. And the facts are the facts. Right now, as we stand here, non-certified staff employed is different. Non-certified is, let's make it easy, don't hold teaching certificates or administrative certificates. There are two hundred and seventy-seven people in this district employed. Of that two hundred and seventy-seven, two hundred and thirty-six of them are sayable residents for eighty-five point two percent. So I want to make it very clear, and I'll talk slow and I'll talk loud. Eighty-five point two percent are sayable residents.
And it should be.
So the very notion that anybody would say, oh, the Florida Ed doesn't hire sayable residents, eighty-five point two percent. And I will challenge any district around here to show me eighty-five point two percent in Saro. So I just wanted to clarify that because unfortunately, the more things get said, the more people believe them. And I like to settle things by finding out what's the facts. Teachers, certified staff, oh, we have five hundred and twenty-one employed. A hundred and forty-three are sayable residents. That's a lower number because you're looking at certain requirements. You have to have certifications, highly qualified. But for those other jobs that don't require any specificity, eighty-five point two percent, that's hard to argue with. So I just want to clarify to the camera.
And how about the administrative?
Was that administrative? We have thirty-one in the district. Six of them are sayable residents. Again, I know some that moved out of Saro, but that's always a low number, and it's gonna be a low number because now you're even making a smaller pool of qualified people in the community. And of those, non-certified is what we're talking about today, eighty-five point two percent, I will don't take that anywhere. So I just want to clarify that for anybody that may be watching, or anybody on the board who worried about running for the election again this year, eighty-five point two percent are sayable residents. And I just felt that I had to throw that out. Because there's notions.
You're saying we're saying no staff because we're running again? Is that why we're saying?
No, no, Mrs. Kilcombs made that comment that if you're running for office, you have to be aware because you're not hiring sayable people. She was using that as a threat, that people won't vote for you because we don't hire sayable residents. That's why I mentioned it. And I just have the facts, eighty-five point two percent.
Okay.
It is what it is.
Thank you.
No problem, that's why I'm here.
All right. Number eleven. And no offense, Ms. Sutherland. And I hope you enjoy your retirement. I would like to know, and I think I brought this up to Mr. Aldano the last time, when Mrs. Poffey was out or somewhere else, I believe, Mrs. Boundon. And you told me it was two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Two thirty.
Two hundred and thirty dollars a day.
And, and I.
And then I mentioned, excuse me, wait a minute. And then I said, why were there not staff to replace it? After speaking to former administrators, they said that they had department heads and other people. So all people made within this school to replace them. Now, we have two vice principals in this school. Are you trying to tell me they're not qualified to take this position as vice principal? And I thought that's always the reason why you make a vice principal. It's like a president, vice president. When the governor's out, it used to be the president of the senate or whatever, step up to the plate. And it was someone, and now they hire a retiree to come in at five hundred dollars a day. I'd like to know what's wrong with the two vice principals? Not qualified?
The first question, let me answer your first question.
Okay.
It's two hundred and thirty dollars a day to substitute for a principal in the elementary schools on a short-term basis. This is a long-term situation and that's the going rate is five hundred. Actually, that's below the going rate. If we brought in principals and supervisors associations, probably over six hundred. That's the internet there. That's why it's five hundred. That was your first question. Your second question, and I'm not going to get into personnel because, again, that's a closed item, but we did try to go that route and it didn't work. So, and I'm not saying they're not qualified. There are other circumstances that I'm unwilling to discuss in public that's of a personnel nature. But that avenue was looked at.
That also sends up a flag to the public, again, it doesn't look good. You have two vice principals in the school, you have how many administrators, you've got department heads, whatnot.
We're down two administrators, not one, in the high school. And thank God for Mr. Najov, who's jumped in and is helping as an administrative assistant. So we are doing what you're saying. So you're just forgetting that we had three vice principals, we only have two now. So to ask another vice principal to take on two responsibilities and one would be unfair. So.
Mr. Aldano, I recall, and I think somebody here maybe, I don't know, Mrs. Backo, Mr. Pachata, when there was more enrollment in the high school, Dr. Parnell was the principal and we had, and Homer Dill was the principal, we had two vice principals with a larger enrollment and it sufficed. We seem to be very, very top-heavy in administration. I'm sorry.
All right.
And then you turn around and look and you're looking for more and more.
Excuse me, Mrs. Kilcombs, once again, facts. I would love my illustrious board member there, Mr. Mackinow, to say we are one of the lowest as far as administrators in the county. I'll put ourselves, how many we have, up against anyone. I'm not gonna throw any of my colleagues under the bus, but that's a fact.
But you're the one with the most higher paid also. You are higher paid as administrators compared to the rest. Yes, you are. And with that, I seem to know a little facts too or pay attention. But I think this is totally wrong. I mean, this is an additional thirty thousand dollars, five hundred dollars a day. I'm trying to calculate the days that Mr. Brown's going to be out or whatever. And thirty thousand dollars in a crunch, a budget crunch, where Mr. Seack says we're even starting out lower. We have buildings that need repair. And to me, I'm sorry, I don't know what the excuse is, that either vice principal didn't step up to the plate, but my comments are, it's wrong. Thank you.
Well, it was the most challenging decision to make, we really did look into it.
Wrong.
No, it was right. But there's three vice principals, one's out.
One's retired, one running.
Medical reasons. One is here for, this is his first year, and one, I believe it's his second year.
Eighteen months.
Yeah.
And not that.
Jill, and to Ms. Trapp, in all due respect, this is personnel, we discussed it. In all due respect, I prefer to leave that answer.
It was the best thing for the kids. It was absolutely the best thing for the children. I mean, I always look out for them, it was the best decision for the children. I know you don't agree with it and I respect that. But we really thought it over and for the kids to be with the administration the way that it would have been, it wasn't. It's better this way, I'm being honest with you.
I will. I will also back that up.
What's wrong with them, they're competent.
And certainly, when a person was appointed as a matter of public record, so indicating that we have one vice principal with eighteen months in that building and another one with three is certainly not a violation of any type of employment law. You have a very low level of experience in terms of experience in the job versus someone who has been in the district for forty-plus years and has held a administrative assistant position in that building.
How is someone going to get the experience if they don't step up to the plate and do it?
They're gonna get ham.
Preferably not under fire. However.
You have a morale problem. Remember, I said that to you about almost five years ago, you didn't want to believe me, Mr. Seack. You said I was wrong. And I told you, there is a morale program, a problem rather. I speak to a lot of people.
Mrs. Kilcombs, could you come back to the microphone so everyone can hear?
You have a morale problem, not program, I've got program on my mind. There is a problem. You may not believe it, but you do. And this, I don't think really helps. When the teacher's there in a high school, and a boss of teacher in a high school, and look, I have two vice principals. Why do I need a retired assistant superintendent? It doesn't make sense. So you're saying they're inexperienced, how are you going to get the experience?
They're gonna be experienced.
Now, would you want one of them to become a people so they don't get the experience?
I think it's inexperienced now, you know, Angel properly, which is gonna help out with that because she's an assistant superintendent. And you're bringing in an assistant superintendent who's actually overqualified for this and helps us out. Yes, we are paying her, but she'll also be helping out with the vice principals that are relatively new. So it's a win-win.
I still think it's wrong. I think there should be some administration in the high school and to save the taxpayers' money. We are in a financial crunch.
Yeah, but I'm worried about the children.
I'm on fixed income and I'm looking, and I'm looking to improve the buildings. I want to put money in maintenance. You're questioning every little bit of maintenance, if we have the money, you want to buy your plants? But you'll blow thirty grand just like that.
Well, we put a lot of the toys to it.
It's for the kids.
Every, it's, yeah, openly entries for the kids.
No, I don't use that ever, that's the first time I use that except for the wall field.
Does anyone else in the public wish to speak? If not.
I make a motion to approve a superintendent's report.
Mrs. Backo, now that we have approval for the superintendent's report, may I make a suggestion? I've thought about this hard, long about this. You know, as an example, with the way Ms. Jenkins does her operation, all I. We have, we have different classes of clerks, all power professionals that do substitute work. I think it would be appropriate that from now, from this point on, or rewrite a policy that there may be a person that's a temporary clerk or person or a temporary power professional. Maybe they would want this job as a permanent cafeteria worker, working three hours guaranteed, you know, five days a week. I think what we should do is like what we do with most of our bidding process, such as for coaching staff, a substitute, you know, non-paid, whatever it is, we usually send postings out. I would suggest that we do this as far as filling our non-certificated staff also, is put a bidding process out. I think would make it much easier for everyone. And I don't think we'd run into a problem in the future if we did it. Picking people internally who want a job.
For open positions.
And for open positions within the district. I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but I'm just throwing this out for a suggestion.
So you're saying you want to post internally if we had an open position for a cafeteria worker?
A cafeteria worker or for a power professional or for a.
But if it's internal, where does that go?
We would put that, we would put it on the web, we would post it in each of the buildings.
But at least everyone else.
I mean, when you have, which I consider one of the lowest positions, there isn't gonna be a big internal rush. I mean, you're not gonna have, I mean.
I think what Tom is saying, I think what Tom is saying, but at least, at least people know that the job is vacant and I don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah.
So in other words, I think what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong. Let's say you have two different cafeteria positions and a power professional. So you put that, you post that physically in each of the buildings and you put it on the website. And then obviously, we would hire whoever we, you know, whoever we thought was the most qualified.
Because you may have a secretary that wants to move into the cafeteria.
Sure, sure. Well, you have to understand they all mix. The reason we don't put, you know, for the substitutes is they all mix. They come in, they substitute, they may be power professional, cafeteria worker, bus aide. They put in for everything subsequently, that's how we choose. That's not an issue, I don't think, Mr. DeAndrea, it's easy to do.
Not at all.
That sounds like a good idea. That's not a problem. I wrote it down, I'll take care of the superintendent's report on that.
Yes, on the superintendent's report.
Did anybody second?
Seconded.
Jill already there.
Jill, Jill.
Mr. Backo. I'm staying on section B, number eight and number eight A. I'll go back to that.
I'll be back for that.
No Section Three, number three, Section C, number three. You're reading there that. Abstaining, Section D, number two. And no one, Section D, acting principal position, number 11, Parlo Selvino.
I'm number 11.
Yeah, Section D, Parlo Selvino.
Right.
Yes, in all areas.
Mr. Pachata.
I'll be voting no in Personnel Section Number Three. And on page 11 certified, I'll be voting no on the acting principal.
Personnel item not certified, number three.
Correct.
On page 11.
Number 11.
Number 11.
Acting principal.
Can we vote for that now?
Yes. That was the recommendation of our finance committee made, is what we were supposed to hire. I'm on the finance committee and I believe we made the right decision.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon.
Yes, with the exception of on Personnel, Section D, number 11, replacement for the high school principal.
Mrs. Rucuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Batko.
Yes, except for noted.
To clarification, Intro Principal, item number 11, does pass five to four.
And what about the cafeteria workers? Delegates of the New Jersey School Board Association?
Yes, the board received my written report. Just a couple of highlights for the, for the public. The governor did sign today the election bill, S-3148. My understanding of that bill is that the board, the council, or the community has the option of moving the school board election to November. If that is done, the vote on the school budget goes away. If it stays in April, the vote on the school budget stays. If the budget exceeds the 2% cap, any overage would be voted on by the public in either case. And if it's in, if the election is being held in November, that overage will be voted on in November. We're going to have court guidance from that bill coming out from NJ SBA, ASBO, and as far as I know, Jonathan, Mr. Bush from the Schwartz, Simon Edelstein, et cetera, will be here to explain that to us at our next meeting. The Urban Hope Act also passed, which basically gives the option of other schools to be created in failing urban districts, basically taking money off of the individual public schools to be siphoned into these new Renaissance schools. Uh, what else? On the national school boards front, I'll be attending the FRN conference coming up in the first week of February. I most likely will be late to the executive session on Tuesday, February 7th, because I'll be coming back from Washington DC that day. We are scheduled to meet with Senator Menendez, Congressman Cologne, and Congressman Holt. That's it.
Thank you. Committee reports, finance, Mr. Malika.
Yes, we met at length on January 10th. We basically ran from 9:00 to 6:30. We met with the principals, supervisors, and department heads, went over the budget. At the beginning of the day, we added a couple items. By the end of the day, we got the pen out and started cutting everything pretty good. We still need another 10 more hours probably to get under budget out. We have another meeting scheduled on the 24th, I believe.
It's all right, Tom. We don't need that.
And we're looking for guidance on some items. I believe we have guidance on security because we're paying police so much for basically patrolling the parking lot in middle school. And we're looking for guidance on like a new science series for the 6th through 8th up in middle school. Wonder how the board feels that it's on the chopping block, which way should we go with it?
I want to keep the cops who are working.
I think the curriculum committee's going to look at that science. We're talking to science supervisor. I hate to just say we're going to cut curriculum. I don't think we should be doing that.
Mr. Mackinon, on that issue, we talked about that science that could be possibly implemented over a three-year period.
Fine.
Also, also, one of the other things that I checked with on that science project is that I asked the supervisor, Claire Kuzinski, about if any of the other districts within Middlesex County have the same type of curriculum. And she believes that four districts, at least Brunswick being one, has it. And I asked her if she could check into it also to find out if we can start doing curriculum. Eventually, the state's going to mandate what type of curriculum and what curriculum you're going to have within either the county or in the state. And I asked her to look into that also to see if we can start implementing curriculum that's going to match. They already have curriculum?
We're working on that.
Right, what I'm saying, but with this science, I wanted to make sure that this was going to match what's going on throughout Middlesex County, not just several having a separate program as opposed to having a program that would be recognized either throughout the county or the state.
Just to clarify, I did refer to the curriculum committee, so hopefully we could discuss this at the next curriculum meeting. And I guess I was really saying, this was something the supervisor wishes to purchase for the 6th, 8th grade. It's not curriculum writing. It's not curriculum-based. The last series was purchased about 10 years ago. So, for those of you who had children back then, probably remember when the last science series was purchased. Because it is such a large dollar amount, I think the curriculum committee should review it before we go forward with it.
What's the dollar amount?
It was 136,000.
We just spent 125 on dirt.
You're right, we did. But it's one of the higher-priced items that were in the budget.
It's curriculum.
But that was in last year's budget. We're looking at next year's budget, which we're in the hole 2.8 million. So, we need to look at everything. And so, it's, everything is going to be looked at and we sort of have our own committees pitted against each other at this point.
That's fine.
So, we will probably find out, I would imagine eventually, we will be here with a list to have a board meeting because there were some other suggestions on certain things that wish to be cut, even by the superintendent.
I suggest we just add everything and then when we go through the cut rounds, we make the cuts.
We did. We did do some of that.
Well, as a board.
And we'll be done.
Come on Tuesday, don't like, spend some time with us if you want.
With regard to the police officer at the middle school, I know that that's going
to be something that is going to be very difficult to cut the way we are currently configured. Because it's always, and it was funny because when we brought the police officers in, there was a huge outrage as to why we need police. And now we want to cut them and we can't get them out. But times have certainly changed. Is there an opportunity for us to look at, again, the schedules between the middle school and the high school and see if there's maybe a different way we can do it that may not necessitate all of those police officers in that particular configuration, where we may be able to cut one if we change the times between the high school and middle school?
We only, we have, we only have one.
We only have one in the high school, one in the middle school.
Right, but we're only paying for one. So, we can't...
One and a half, not even. And the other guy's only there four days.
So, it's either we get rid of them or...
Right, the high school's SRO is there four days. And the middle school individuals only there a half a day. I think...
And it's the middle school one that is, that's the issue with the budget?
Well, whatever. You're spending a lot of money on security.
What were they, were they 50,000 each?
No, the middle school, the SRO is around 40, 50,000. The one at the middle school is, is $45 an hour, four hours, or 180, whatever number of days they're actually in, because they're not always in every day. So, it comes out to another 30, 30,000 or so. And then we have all the other security for all the other events that we do that they do. And this year's budget of 85, we far exceeded that last year. Remember what last year's bill was, man? I think last year's bill came close to 100 when all said and done, with all the activities involved.
And that includes the football games and everything?
And I'm trying to get a bill from the borough on that for the four months that's passed, so we'll get a better idea of what we've done so far.
No.
You definitely need police in the middle school.
Well, one, one, the conversation that came up at the budget meeting was focused on the parking lots, police.
Who does traffic control?
Like, who's going to watch the parking lot?
Not in Washington, Rhode.
If you recall, part of the other question, the thing is that you can only have the cop in a four-hour, four-hour shift because of their, because of their contract. So, that became part of it also, is there really a need for four hours or not also? But there's nothing we can do about that. That's why it became use it or not use it, because you can't say, well, we're taking for two hours here and two hours there. It has to be a four-hour shift. That's the only way their contract works.
Right. And we discussed, even when we discussed the police officer, we had discussed using security guards and the board decided not to, but...
Our own security people or possible hiring our own also.
It's more just of certain things that are back on the table because of the budget.
Mrs. Batko.
Yeah.
Would it be a possibility to look into hiring staff as such, like when they do on a road construction project? Where would they, I don't know if that's...
That is what we're doing.
You're doing, that four hours is on a road construction payment?
Yes, it's the same, it's the same philosophy.
Same principle. They have to get their rid of them on four hours. Thank you.
If anyone has any suggestions or wants to cut out of the budget, I'm sure the finance committee would be happy to entertain them. Okay, pick committee. DePinto.
On Monday night, January 9th, pick committee met. The pick committee met at the high school. There was about 40 people in attendance. We had a very good tour. Ms. Zeichner was there, myself, Ms. Bruno, Rucuya, and Ms. Batko. And we went over the parent and staff survey. We use that to make improvements. If you know of any improvements you'd like to be made, you need to make the comments because they're really looked at to see what ways to improve the district. If you don't want to make the comments on there, you can email or call the administrators because that's the only way we're really going to know what you want or what you'd like to see done. Also, that night, Mr. Justin Fiori, the principal of Eisenhower, was there and he gave a very good presentation on homework helping and study skills, what a parent can do to assist with homework, and as a parent, how can I help my child prepare for that dreaded test? It was really good. I was a little concerned that it was going to be only a K through 3 presentation, but he really did an awesome job in the middle school, in a high school situation. And we're going to get that presentation up on the website so that everybody can view the PowerPoint. And our next meeting is February 13th. And what's that presentation?
On February 13th, Mr. Lockaloy will be there talking about the parent portal. By that time, it will be open for the K through 5 elementary parents. So, he'll do a presentation on that and be there to answer some questions. And we may be doing something on internet safety and social media. Okay? But we will send out parent link a few days ahead of time and we'll let you know all about it.
Redistricting committee. We met on Thursday, January 12th, myself, Mr. Mackinon, Ms. Bruno, Rucuya, and Mrs. DePinto. And we discussed the demographic study that came out and the impact that it is going to have in our growth in the grammar schools particularly. We discussed some alternatives of what we can do. We need to gather some financial data. It was just initial, an initial meeting, but we will reconvene and hopefully have some better control on the financial side as to, but no decisions were rendered as to what we're going to do. Any questions?
Ms. Batko, we also have a technology meeting on December 21st. Mr. Valka, Mr. Syak, Ms. Zeichner, Ms. Paul, and myself. We reviewed the proposed budget, made a few cuts, but set most of them onto the finance committee. We discussed a bring-your-own-device policy and the policy committee will be meeting shortly to define that. We talked about the Wi-Fi access in schools, in the schools, really making sure that we have that before the bring-your-own-device is rolled out everywhere, talking about starting that as a pilot program at the high school with a few teachers that are interested in doing that, to iron out any problems that there might be with it. We talked about continuing with the TV course and if we should upgrade the equipment. We discussed virtualizing the servers so that we do not have to purchase new servers for several years, which will save anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 each year.
Question, the timeframe you said for the high school, you were available to pilot it with a couple of teachers, give the timeframe.
We were talking about what's the policy. Once we approved the policy, possibly March or April, rolling it out for a couple of months until the end of the year.
And the finance committee did discuss the Wi-Fi and we did need a price back for the middle school and high school as how much that would cost to get it wireless.
Yes.
Did we get that?
What we've, what we've done, in the budget originally, it had four elementaries. And at the finance committee, we discussed why bringing the four elementaries on when we need to move more from, and Sandy, correct me if I get this wrong, instead of a point, a web point, a point access, we need to go more to a cluster access before we can bring devices in to allow more, more individuals onto the network. Right now, because of the mechanism we have for Wi-Fi or connectivity, it's only in low-key, it's smaller nodes, I guess is the best way. We need to cluster them to get more better cover, much better coverage in the building. So, what we're looking for is a cost, instead of having the four elementaries go to a cluster system, to bring possibly the high school and middle school into a cluster system first. Because it's interesting, same conversation that Sandy and I had with the computer people from Pro Media and their specialists, with the same meeting the finance committee started to have, is where do you, where do you start? Do you start bottom, start at the lower grades and bring it up, or do you start at the higher grades and bring it down? And I know the finance committee believes that it's best to start with our high school, get to high school with the cluster, and then work our way downs to the elementary so that we're approaching it in that fashion and not some other method. Again, the technology committee needs, and there's a different recommendation from the technology committee, I think it's important it be shared with the finance committee. Our direction was to go from the high school and bring it down, not the opposite way.
I don't know if it's in there, but that almost sounds like a core belief that should be part of our technology plan, you know, the master plan for, you know, three or five years that we do. It sounds like philosophical...
It's a real...
That should be debated between committees, but rather, you know...
Again, and that's why it was interesting, the same conversation we had with the people from Pro Media, the experts. Everybody had a different opinion as to where do you start. And I think it's important, the unfortunate part is that as we integrate more and more of this wireless technology, the systems have to continually be upgraded. And there's a point in time where you have to say, more or less enough is enough, and you have to make use of what you have. And that's why, Mrs. Batko, or Mr. Valka indicated, we put money in for technology. We got close to 1.2 billion dollars right now just to bring us the capabilities of trying to bring complete wireless to the district. So, there's not, we're not even budgeting for that complete wireless at this point in time. We need to do upgrades of our internal systems above and beyond the billion dollars we spent last year to get these kind of access points so that you're more or less, no matter where you walk within a building, you have connectivity and you don't lose it. Right now, that's our problem. You're losing it and obviously, for those that don't understand, obviously, the more devices that hit the network, the slower it gets. So, you have to increase the amount of points that it can get into. So, that's why these costs are starting to really start to incur at a rapid pace because you're moving technology, you're trying to catch up with technology and you don't have the infrastructure to get there at this point in time.
The curriculum committee was also discussing this. So, it's, I think it's an issue that crosses all the committees. And one of the things we were looking at was basically a bottleneck effect where if you have classes, especially during the bulk of the day, the 11 to 2 o'clock, where all schools are using technology, it kind of funnels its way into a bottleneck situation. So, we've been looking at, from the curriculum committee's perspective, we've been looking at different schools in the, in various districts and seeing how they're dealing with those issues and how they're implementing some of the new technologies such as iPads and so forth. So, I think, I think Mr. Mackinon mentioned it before, I think this is something that I think this is something that we need to look at from all the, from all the committees' perspectives, what we're looking for and what we actually can do before we progress.
It's a major expense. Technology, not only here, but in every district, becomes a major expense as we're trying to keep up with our technology stack.
I think from everything we've heard, everybody's in agreement that infrastructure required to any more new devices needs to be upgraded.
And the other thing Mr. DeAndrea brought up was maybe to look at a lease purchase as opposed to buying an outright, the one going to the... So you're looking at that? You're going to look into that?
Yes, I am. And Pro Media's already said, but knowing where the interest rates are, I would do the same as I did this year. I would put it out to bid, because the market out there is wonderful. So I would rather go out with the market and see what we can get than just settle with someone.
So are you going to have, so is it definite we can do this lease purchase?
Yeah, I'm still making sure as to how long we can do it. And I have to work with the law firm to make sure where, how long we can do it. My understanding is right now it's no more than five years. But I'll work with them to see what we can and can't do, because it becomes, great, the cost savings for the current budget for lease purchase at that point with it. The toughest part is, sometimes they want tangible things to lease purchase. So we'll see.
How would that not be tangible?
The wireless nodes and all that are really not tangible. But I'm referring more to the nodes and all.
Oh, I got you.
Switches and gears, the switches for the computer and all the lights.
But didn't that also include servers?
Yes, that's one point to include servers and all. So we're looking at all of those items. Again, it's quite costly, and at some point in time, you know, we do one, we lease purchase this year a million, it's costing us $250. We do another million something, that's another $250. And next year, we're introducing more. We never stop the $250 cycle, and that continues to grow.
Does anybody have anything else for discussion?
Mr. Batto, on the demographic study I looked through here, one of the issues that this board's going to be facing is with the staffing that's going to be required in next year's budget, we're going to have to look at, really take a serious look at half-day kindergarten. It's something that a lot of people may not approve of, but, you know, it's going to be a cost factor here with increasing staff. Again, we discussed this in December about, it's in the demographic study. We also discussed this, I asked Mr. Syak about the benefit that was stated pertaining to a half-day kindergarten versus a full-day kindergarten. It's something that we're really going to have to sit down and look at, being financially constrained.
Well, that's, the redistricting committee understands that and believes that we come up with some viable solutions that will keep a full-day kindergarten. So give us the opportunity to research that before we entertain any board discussion.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just have one item. Mrs. Batto had requested that the board conduct the board's self-evaluation as per our policy required by CUSAC. I sent out an email today with information on that. The entire process is done online through the New Jersey School Boards Association website. There's instructions in the memo on how to do it. A copy of the actual instrument that you'll use online is attached. It basically consists of three sections. The first section is the relative importance of each area of governance that you, as an individual, believe as a board we should place on that area. The second section deals with how we, as a board, function in that particular area. And the third section is based on how well you think you, as an individual board member, function in that individual area. If we can get that completed, like, within the next two weeks, then our field rep from New Jersey School Boards can tabulate the results, and then we can decide whether we want to have her in to take us through the process or in what direction we want to go. Does anyone, and the process takes, I would say, about an hour, maybe an hour and 15 minutes, tops, to complete. It could take you less. Does anyone have any objection with getting that done by January 31st?
No, as far as the CUSAC requirements, is the CUSAC requirement just that we do it? Do we have to have somebody come in to discuss it with us?
The CUSAC requirement is we have to do it, and we should have a corrective action plan for the things we want to improve. Now, we can certainly look at the results and come up with that on our own. We can bring someone in to facilitate the process and throw it up to the board.
And what do we do with that corrective action plan? Do we have to send it somewhere?
No, we basically file it, and we act on it. I mean, for example, the last corrective action that we had had us coming up with a new board member orientation campaign, which Mr. McEnon led, and we now have that, you know, together with the administration, where we do a board member orientation. So we'll see what recommendations come out of this process, and then we can implement actions. And it's really up to us to kind of police ourselves.
Anything else before I open it to the public? If not, does anyone from the public wish to speak on any or all topics? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.